This is the City of Wapaka, first Tuesday of the month, city council meeting.
Okay, so I'll call this public hearing to order. Sandy, if you would, take role, please.
Brian Smith.
Here.
Colin Dykstra.
Here.
Lori Chestnut.
Here.
Paul Hagan.
Here.
Ellen Keeland.
Here.
Scott Pritchardski.
Here.
Dave Peterson.
Here.
Paul Mayo.
Here.
Dimitri Martin.
Here.
Mary Fair.
Here.
And Eric Olson.
Here.
Ten present, we have a quorum.
All right, and this public hearing has to do with amending Chapter 17 of the zoning code, and Erin, do you just want to remind us what that is?
Yep, so this will be the first reading of something that's come through Plan Commission. It's again relating to signage. This one has to do with three different things. A category called hanging signs and the creation of that, a size change for canopy awning signs, which we'll talk about, and then also ground signs in the residential district. So those are the three things we'll be talking about.
Okay, so at this time, we would take public input on the change to the zoning code, and we'll take testimony in favor of the zoning change first. If you would like to give testimony in favor, I'll please step up to the podium, give your name and address. For the record, limit your time to three minutes or less.
Hi, my name is Kent Pigorish. My wife and I own Main Street Marketplace on Main Street here. I'm speaking in favor of the changes to the zoning ordinance. We put up some signs about 30 years ago, realized that they were never permitted when they were put up, and maybe they weren't permitted because they went to met code at that point in time. And we've had them taken down and put up three times since then to redo them. But this time, we took them down when we renovated the front of our building this summer, and this is the first time that our sign maker, our sign person, applied for permit to put them back up again. And when we did that, we found out that they didn't meet code. I think maybe that code back in the 80s was written to take into account a 22-foot normal single building, maybe not a larger storefront like our building. It's 44 feet. So I'm hoping that you approve this change for the size of the canopy to 100 square feet. We have our sign already built at a substantial cost to us. We're hoping to put that back up here later this month if things go well. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Kent. Anybody else that would like to give testimony in favor of the zoning change? Anybody else? Anybody that would like to give testimony in opposition? Any testimony in opposition to the zoning change? If not, I'll declare this hearing closed at 6:05 PM. All right, moving on to the regular agenda. So this is Tuesday, October 5th, 2021, and I'll call this meeting to order, and let's begin with the point of allegiance.
Point of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we'll ask Sandy to read the clerk's open meeting statement for us.
This meeting and all other meetings of the common council are open to the public. Proper notice has been posted and given to the media in accordance with Wisconsin state statutes, so the citizens may be aware of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting.
And would you take role for this meeting also?
Colin Dykstra.
Here.
Lori Chestnut.
Here.
Paul Hagan.
Here.
Ellen Keeland.
Here.
Scott Pritchardski.
Here.
Dave Peterson.
Here.
Paul Mayo.
Here.
Dimitri Martin.
Here.
Mary Fair.
Here.
And Eric Olson.
Here.
Ten present, we have a quorum.
I'm here, too.
And Mayor Smith.
Thanks. Also, again, real quick, we'll go through the other attendees. We, Paul Mayo, you did hear Paul Mayo's name. He is on virtually with us tonight. And then also Justin Barron's, our Public Works Director, is also on virtually with us tonight. And then we have Sandy Stibbs, our city clerk, Aaron Johnson, our city administrator, Kathy Kaza, Finance Director, Sue Abrahamson, who's taking Peg's place tonight. Peg is on vacation. Sue, welcome for coming. Jared Raku. Raku. I'll get it. I got a little time here. Jared Raku, our Community and Economic Development Director. Tom Hart, City Attorney, Andrew Whitman, our Parks and Recreation Director, Brian Hoseal, Police Chief, and of course Josh is roaming the hallways again haunting people. Our IT person. Did I forget anybody? All right, welcome everybody to tonight's meeting. Let's start with the consent agenda. We have a consent agenda with a few items on there. There is no addition. All items for that consent agenda. Are there any items that you see, council members, that you would like to see moved to the regular agenda where you would, where you would like to act on those separately or individually? If not, we're looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda as printed.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Martin, second by Chestnut, that we approve the consent agenda as printed. Discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Against, say no. Motion carried. All right, under the regular agenda, no additions to that also. So what you see, what's printed is what we have, so I'd be looking for a motion to approve.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Chestnut, second by Hagan, that we approve the regular agenda as printed. Discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Against, motion carried. Under non-agenda items and announcements, we have a presentation by Dr. Paul Sletton on carbon fee and dividend. And Ellen, you're actually the one that brought this up. Do you want to go ahead and introduce?
Well, you recall, I think it was in 2018, we had discussed this issue before also. And Paul had asked for a chance to revisit with us on this issue. So we were able to get him into the schedule, into the agenda for tonight.
All right, welcome, Dr. Sletton.
Yeah, thank you. Can you all hear me okay?
Fine.
That was three years ago. This council lent some support to the idea of carbon fee and dividend. Tonight, I just want to give you a brief refresher on the idea, let you know what some of the legislative issues are on the national level, and then just close by taking any questions, and then asking if the council would again consider offering a note of support to the idea of carbon fee and dividend. The print is small up there, I apologize, but it's all in your packet. Citizens Climate Lobby is a bipartisan organization that I head here in Wapaka and have for the last four years. Citizens Climate Lobby supports an economy-wide carbon tax, where the money is actually given to people typically referred to as a carbon fee and dividend or carbon tax and dividend. With a carbon tax, the fee is applied wherever fossil fuels enter the economy. The carbon price flows through the economy, incentivizing businesses and people to switch to clean energy. Fossil fuels such as oil, natural gas, and coal all contain carbon, and when burned, they release potent greenhouse gases and carbon dioxide in the atmosphere. Here's the point. Putting a price on carbon and placing a fee on these fossil fuels places a tax on carbon pollution. The carbon pricing fee is based on metric tons of carbon dioxide the fuel would generate, and it would be assessed at the earliest point of sale into the economy as close as possible to the well, mine, or port. Let's go to, we'll go right to the top. In your packet, you'll see why put a price on carbon. You can go right to the top there, Jane. A carbon price is the single most powerful tool available to reduce America's carbon pollution. A strong economy-wide price on carbon would reduce America's carbon pollution as much as 30% in the first five years alone. It is the single most powerful tool we have to hit net zero by 250. It will produce affordable clean energy. America leads the world with technology and innovation. When government puts a price on carbon, it sends a signal through the economy. Businesses respond by becoming more energy efficient and developing new sources of clean energy. These innovations will provide affordable, reliable clean energy and drive us towards further improvements in available clean energy. Here is the interesting concept, money in your pocket. So a carbon tax becomes affordable for ordinary Americans when the money collected from the fossil fuel companies is given as a dividend or a carbon cash-back payment to every American to spend with no restrictions. This protects low and middle-income Americans who would otherwise not be able to afford the transition. Studies show that a monthly carbon cash-back payment are enough to essentially cover the costs of 85% of American households, including 95% of the least wealthy 60% of Americans. This type of carbon tax is called a carbon fee and dividend, and the organization I work with here has supported that for over a decade. As a physician, I have to tell you, this would reduce deaths from pollution. In this particular area of our country, we burn a lot of fossil fuel, and that certainly affects the health of many of our residents, particularly the children. This also creates jobs. The price on carbon will put Americans back to work in well-paid, stable, local jobs in clean energy, and investment in clean energy today will lead to approximately three times as many jobs as investments in fossil fuel. Businesses prefer a carbon price to other climate solutions because they remain financially stable while they adjust their operations thanks to a predictable and gradually rising price on carbon. They will not, I like to emphasize this, they will not lose time or spend money trying to understand complicated new regulations and rules and incorporate them into their plans. A price on carbon is the best climate solution for America's economy because it puts the most cost-efficient way to lower America's pollution. To match its impact, multiple regulations across economic sectors would be needed at an additional cost of hundreds of billions of dollars every year to America's economy. The net climate and health benefits of a carbon tax are estimated at 800 billion each year. If we fail to take climate action, and I want to say this again, if we fail to take climate action, economists emphasize that the global wealth could fall by 25%, by 2100, and an increasing number of Americans falling into poverty. So again, this carbon fee and dividend is a national effort. Why should the national government get involved? Well, it's clear we have to do something. What's nice about the carbon fee and dividend is it can take away all of the pollution control regulation, the cap and fee in trade, all that stuff, which is very complicated, and in legal limo for years. Carbon fee and dividend would be much, much simpler, and like I said, would give some predictability to businesses. Right now, on the legislative level in Congress, in the next few weeks and in the past few months, the carbon fee and dividend idea is definitely being talked about and is part of the negotiation. So it's very, very exciting, and it does have both liberals and conservatives behind this idea. It's clear we have to do something, and this idea is, I think, very exciting and different. So I hope that the council will consider again a statement of support for the idea of carbon fee and dividend. I think it is a very important step. It's not the only step. We have to do many, many, many things. But carbon fee and dividend, I think, is a very simple, effective, and powerful tool to reduce carbon emissions while not hurting the lower end of the segment of our economy and the poor people in this country. So thank you. I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you for attention. Thanks for all your hard work during the pandemic. Why is a doctor here during a pandemic talking about carbon fee and dividend? Because long after the pandemic is gone, we will have to deal with this subject. And I do not have any grandchildren yet, but this is about what we're doing for future generations. And I really appreciate everybody's time in listening to this presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions about carbon fee and dividend, and I really appreciate your time.
All right, Ellen, go ahead.
Dr. Sletton, if we were to show support, what would that do for you? What would you do with it?
Yep, thanks. Well, both liberal and conservative members of Congress are debating these ideas right now. And so if they heard from our community, and I'll tell you, there are many, many, many communities across the country that are supporting this idea, it would lend support that people really do care about this and that they're willing to do something about it. In your packet also is the U.S. Chamber of Commerce is in there as well as endorsing, not specifically any legislation, but if you get a minute, just look at the business side of this issue, not just the treeharker side, which I certainly have represented for many years, but this business side. The U.S. Chamber of Commerce says, lack of initiative or lack of action is not okay. We have to do something. And they are endorsing something very, very similar. The idea of something that's predictable, controllable, fair, doesn't hurt the lower end of the economic scale. That's what we do not want to do. We do not want to hurt people at the lower end of the economic scale. If you just put a gas tax or you come up with some other kind of tax, it's going to hurt the lower end. With carbon fee and dividend, the lower end, if you get $140 a month from the carbon fee and dividend from the U.S. government as a check, as a deposit in your direct account, $140 for a single woman, black woman living in Milwaukee, is a very, very powerful tool. You know, it's a very powerful way, and these people then get to spend the money on what they want. My last point is, it takes the government out of deciding what environmental policies are correct. It lets people decide. It's let people decide, okay, I'm going to spend my $140 on a bus pass for this year instead of putting gas in my Hummer. I mean, it really puts the power to control these choices in individuals' hands, not in the government deciding which company gets this or which company gets that. So to answer your question, the idea is, Congress needs to hear that there's ideas, that we care about it, and I guarantee you, it's worth it. So thank you for your time. Any other questions?
Anybody else have any other questions? Go ahead, Colin.
Your statement was, it would be a tax at the earliest point where a fossil fuel enters the economy.
Right.
I don't know what that means.
Sure, thanks. So if you, and again, I encourage anybody here to read more about this, but the idea is, the federal government would place a tax at the wellhead or at the port of entry for these fossil fuels. The fossil fuel companies will have that tax, and what do they do? They have to pay that tax. They're going to pass that along. Everything that's made with fossil fuel is going to become more expensive. But companies all over the country are going to go, wow, okay, that's what it's going to cost me this year. It's a graded, year-by-year tax. It goes up year by year. So you can predict, okay, next year, I don't think I'm going to, you know, I'm going to change to solar. I'm going to change to this. I'm going to change to that. It just puts that creativity and forces businesses and everybody to figure out how to do things better. Does that answer your question?
A little. As a secondary question to that, how would that impact our locality? I don't, you know, I don't know any, I don't know what that means for the town, city of Wapaka or even the county.
That's totally, totally legitimate, and I think that's why I thank you all again for your time. How does this affect us directly? It would be for the, again, if you think about the average income of the folks in our county, they would be getting a check. They would be getting a check to spend. And how are they going to spend it? Are they going to spend it? You know, it's sort of an economic stimulus. Are they going to spend it on gas for their car? Or are they going to spend it on something else? So, and it's an incentive for businesses as well to be creative about how they make their ends meet. So more specifically, I could, again, you all have limitations on your time, but there is, I can provide you, Colin, with some actual calculators. So you can go on to the Citizens Climate Lobby website and see exactly what it would mean to you and your family. So if this goes through at $15 a ton, for example, you can actually see what your monthly check would be, and you can calculate it, calculate it out. I think that would be really interesting for you to do, and I think that would answer your question a little better.
How about on the other side, our employers, our businesses, or is there anybody in, like, is somebody who's cutting down a forest pay that tax? If you're chopping up wood to be used for something that might get burned, is that? I guess I'm.
Good question, no.
Is that an impact to our county?
Mm-hmm. That's again, a good question. No, this would go, this tax would be levied at the farthest level up the chain for fossil fuels, not for someone who is, you know, burning wood. This would be specifically directed at fossil fuels, natural gas, coal.
Okay, thank you.
Good question. Yeah, good question.
Anybody else have any questions? Go ahead, Mary.
Hi. So would you give us just one, if we were to read one article or one short book or one thing about this?
Sure.
Would you have that to give us?
Well, I'm glad you asked, because in your packet is just the U.S. Chamber of Commerce policy on climate. And I think that would be a great, great place to go. So I put that in your, it's one of the documents in your packet. And then I think you can go to citizensclimatelobby.org, ccl.org, and you can read all about carbon pricing. There is a lot, or just, I'm sure your Facebook is still up today, but you can go and you can look carbon fee and dividend, and you can hear conservative Republicans talking about support of this. You can hear liberal Democrats talking in support of this. It's a really interesting idea. And if all you do is just Google carbon fee and dividend, you will, I think you'll be able to follow some of that through. But I did put that Chamber of Commerce packet in there. I don't think we could.
So just to correct Dr. Sletton there, it is not in your packet what he's talking about. So if there is something that you would like to share with us on that, Dr. Sletton, if you could just.
Yep, it's just those two, it's those two documents that were at that. So I sent three documents. It's just the other two, and I didn't ask you to print them. I guess I apologize.
Yep, no problem. Anybody else? Go ahead, Dimitri.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that I understand this correctly. So let's say the average American or citizen uses 100 gallons of gas a month, and there's a carbon fee on gas at, say, $3 a gallon. So they would spend $300 more a month on filling up their gas tank, but they would receive a check in the mail for 300 bucks. So it would be a wash for the average user. But someone who's using double because they're driving a Hummer or they're, you know, driving something that consumes a lot of gas or they've got, say, some really big boating equipment or something, and they're just burning through fuel, it's really going to hurt them more than someone who is cautious and does their best to not use as much.
Yes, that's exactly true.
So it aligns the incentive, basically.
Right, and it takes the government out of deciding winners and losers. I mean, it's up to you to become a responsible person. But I really want to emphasize that calculator. So you can actually go to, again, citizensclimatelobby.org and just put in family household calculator, and you can see, based on the price per ton of CO2 emissions, that you can actually figure out what your, how your family would do. So I encourage you all to do that.
All right, any other questions, comments? Well, thank you.
Thanks really much for your time, and I look forward to, if you can give us a statement of support, that's great. But if not, you've learned about carbon fee and dividend. You can read about it. You can think about it. It's really a fascinating concept, and I really appreciate your time. I really do. Thank you very much.
You know, Dr. Sletton, what you could do is, if you could find a resolution that other municipalities have done.
Sure.
And send that on to Sandy.
Sure, we could do that.
We'll put it on the agenda. Our next meeting.
2018.
Is it going to be the same?
I was going to look at it tonight before I came, and I'd be happy to, we can look at it and share it back and forth. We did one in 2018 in support.
I don't think it hurts to do it multiple times. We're fine.
Thanks, everybody. Thanks for all your work. I really appreciate it. Thanks.
All right. Okay, next up, under non-agenda items and announcements is public input. This is for a non-agenda item. So if you would like to speak to the council on a non-agenda item, please step up to the podium, give your name and address for the record. Limit your time at that podium to three minutes or less.
Hello. I think most of you know me, Wayne Nessler, E2281 Lamplighter Lane, right across Cover Bridge. I'm a bit confused about the sudden library closing. If I come in from the back parking lot, I can take a left and pay my water bill, get some notarized, ask about the recycling center hours, probably make an appointment with you, Mayor Smith, but I can't go across the hall and get a copy of Tom Sawyer because apparently if I open up to page 82, COVID jumps out at you. And if COVID does hide in the pages of literature, our friends John and John across the street at the book cellar did not get the memo. The rec center, I could go sign up for basketball and volleyball, although I'm not too good at those things anymore. Senior Center literally has like eight things on their calendar tomorrow. I went to the school board website, saw a beautiful picture of the 2021 homecoming court. Nobody masked, all standing together. Some people here tonight are masked, some are unmasked, some social distancing. Great. Teach your own. I think the library had it right if they want to take precautions. Earlier in the season, they required masks and social distancing and hand sanitizing, and that's fine. I haven't been to every business in Wapaka County, but I've been to several, and they all seem to be very happy to see me. Some say mandatory masks. Do I agree with masks? No. But I do have one. And out of respect for my neighbors and fellow citizens, when a business requires masks, I simply put one on. So I don't know why the library is suddenly closed. This is not a personal attack on Peg. I expected her to be here this evening. This is, you know, this is not intentional, like, oh, she's not here. I want to smear her. As most of you know, I work right next door at Wapaka Radio, FM 96.3, and I welcome her at any time to come and explain the decision. If she doesn't want to talk to me, I'm sure my wonderful boss, Josh Warner, will engage in conversation with her. And with that, I thank you very much.
Thank you, Wayne. So I'll make a comment here. Anybody that's listening, and that includes you, Wayne, also, if you want to understand why the library chose to close, I would invite you I would invite you to call the library, email the library, and have them explain it to you. I think that's the best answer to it. To council members, we were notified last Thursday in a meeting with Peg and Sue and their board president, Julie Idon, that they chose to, to go back to curbside and close. That's nothing that city council has authority over. Their library board has autonomy on that, and so they chose to close because of the, what they see as high numbers of COVID in Wapaka County. And so they, that's their choice. So we, we don't have any control over that. We have control over budget numbers, but we don't have control over how they run their, their business. So, but Wayne, I would contact Sue. I, I know Peg is on vacation, and so Sue would be the next in line for you to talk to on that. And hopefully she can give you the answers you're looking for. Yep. All right, any other public input? Anybody that would like to give public input? All right, let's move on, then. We have new business, we have, and we just had a public hearing on this, so, so we'll talk about that right now. It's ordinance number fifteen dash twenty twenty-one, and ordinance amending chapter seventeen of the City of Wapaka zoning code. And it looks like Aaron and Jared are going to explain to us what that ordinance change is doing.
Thank you, Mayor Smith. I'll, I'll lead us off here, and Jared, if you have any comments, feel free to step in. And the reason I'm leading this off is just because this one started long before Jared got here. Jeff Sanders brought this forward to Plan Commission, it was discussed in Plan Commission, at least some segments of it. But as I said, in the public hearing, this is kind of a three-faceted thing, and I'll take us through the first one. The first conversation was around ground signs in residential districts. And Plan Commission had a conversation back and forth, and really came to a decision that they were okay with allowing two ground signs in residential districts. I think the conversation or examples of Vikings fans and Packer fans and things like that came up, and residents should have the opportunity to, to have that. Another important piece here is to know is we currently don't allow any. So City of Wapaka does not allow any ground signs. Now, you can have temporary signs such as real estate signs or sales and things like that, and that's allowed for a period of time, but you can't have a permanent ground sign. This would allow two permanent ground signs. I, I do want to say something that I think snuck by us in Plan Commission. You'll see under here, it says these signs shall not exceed sixteen square feet in sign face area. I do not think that, in my opinion, that was not the intent to have them that large. I think six square feet resembles the types of signs that we were talking about, I believe, Plan Commissioners. Please feel free to disagree with me if, if you think that's the case. And just like any other signs, not, not located in the public right of way, they can't be artificially illuminated. So that, that is that conversation. We can go back to that if there's questions or discussion. The next one is the awning canopy sign. So this is the one that Mr. Pagorsch discussed in his public input in the public hearing. I'm just going to use Main Street Marketplace as an example. Main Street Marketplace came forward with a sign permit when they redid all of their signs, looks fantastic. A lot of them were able to be permitted, even though they weren't permitted in the past. One of them that wasn't and did not meet our current sign code, and, and we didn't see that it met other ones in the past, was their large canopy awning sign that says Main Street Marketplace, because it exceeded the fifty-square-foot minimum. It is actually, I believe, eighty-two square feet, and this is a proposal that would bring it to a hundred square feet. I think the discussion was, you know, that at eighty-two square feet or a hundred square feet, did we feel like it was negatively taking away from the community or a detriment to the aesthetics of the downtown of these districts? And I thought, I think the answer was no, from a Plan Commission standpoint. I, I do know that Kent's signs and proposed signs do look very nice. So that's that conversation. The, the next conversation is hanging signs. There was another business in town that also had hanging signs up, and I think part of it was in response to COVID and the lack of traffic, and just trying to get creative and doing something. And we had to go to them and say, this is in violation of our current ordinance. And it's another one of those things where we tried to reflect and say, okay, this is in violation of our current ordinance. We have a duty to notify them of that and go through the processes, but do we feel like this should be in violation of our current ordinance? Or should we take a look at it and consider allowing these? The result of that was, we think that there's no reason that they cannot be allowed. So we created this hanging sign designation, which you'll see in front of you. Maximum hanging sign square footage, four square feet, can't be less than eight feet from sidewalk to the, the bottom of the sign for, for safety purposes. So that's an overview of the conversation we had at Plan Commission. And again, this is a first reading, so with that, I'll open it up to, to questions.
Go ahead, yeah.
If we do change that to six square feet rather than sixteen square feet, does it have to come back again, then, as a first reading?
Well, I, again, I, Tom, this is probably, Attorney Hart, this is probably a question.
I would say no. If it's amended, if, if there's a motion to amend to six at a second reading, no.
Mayor?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Paul.
It's okay, I would think that Packer signs should be limited only to twenty square feet, and Viking signs should be one square foot. What do you think of that idea? And you can throw bear signs in there, too.
Yeah, no, I, well, that's the dilemma that you have, you're obviously, you know, the signs that you're putting up. You have difference of opinions on what those signs say that are put up in people's yards and stuff like that, too. But right now, people are putting up signs, and they're not supposed to be putting up signs, you know. So we, we, as a planning commission, we really felt like we needed to clean it up. And we didn't feel like no signs was the answer. So, I mean, that's, that's where we are. Now, remember, this is divided into a number of things, so we're, we're talking about signs in the yard, but we're also talking about other signs, too, that, that Aaron talked about, that affect, like Main Street Marketplace and so on. Hey, but Dave, go ahead.
Just for my clarification, I know there's a local church that has a new sign purchased, but could not put it up due to some restriction of the old one. How, how was that one amended by this new one?
Yeah, great question, Dave. So if it's the same church I'm thinking of on Badger Street.
Yes.
That was actually taken care of in a previous amendment to the sign ordinance, and they have since been permitted. And it has gone, I believe, it's either been installed or will be installed.
Yeah, this is completely different. Yeah, yep, absolutely. We'll probably see this for a while, we might see some changes to the sign ordinance every other month or something like that, until we get through the whole process. Once we change the zoning, we found some things that maybe didn't match our community that were, that were put in there.
And Mayor, if you don't mind me piggybacking off of that, a lot of the things, they, they existed even before zoning update. But as, even though we've had it forever, as it's come to light, we're still asking that question, is that how we want it, forever into the future?
So if, if we're looking at changing that section one. Yeah, so we're looking at one A, one B, to six feet, I think we should be putting a motion in place to change that, since this is the recommendation to city planning. Eric, do you have?
Yeah, I got a comment. I ju, I just want to, I guess, ask a question, is that including the Realtor signs that we're talking about?
So.
That, that square footage allowance?
Yeah.
Because I'm just thinking, aren't there some bigger ones? And, and I guess the other question is, does it include square footage on both sides? Like, if it's, or is it just considered one side of the sign? Like, if it's a sign that has something on two sides, like, maybe, I don't know if a Realtor sign has information on both sides? It does? So would that be the square footage on both sides?
Good question, we had talked about it as one side. So maximum of the area, and it wouldn't be times two, that's how we had talked about it. But if we want to clarify that, I think we can do that and bring it back with that amendment. As far as, are there larger Realtor signs? I, I believe, I believe there are. And this would, that might have been some of Jeff's thinking in the sixteen square foot.
That's my point, I guess I'm getting at, is I, I, I think we need to be careful, maybe it was supposed to be sixteen feet. You know, everybody thinks about those little signs that we're talking about, right? But there may be some exceptions in the sixteen feet. I just don't want to limit some of these signs either.
You don't?
No.
Sorry.
I don't know, I, I guess.
To your point, I, I think you're, like, a lot that's available, or multiple lots available in a residential area, I think there currently are signs, large signs from real estate agents, that are saying, this is for sale. And like, like you're saying, it wouldn't be under six square feet. The.
Go ahead, Dimitri.
Yeah, a, a standard sort of real estate sign that you'd see, maybe hanging on a post. The largest that it would be, would be three foot across by, by two foot tall. That wouldn't include a rider, perhaps on top of it, that says for sale or whatever, sold. But to go bigger than that is, is, it wouldn't fit in a traditional sort of frame.
Okay.
So I think that six square feet would be appropriate. I don't know that you want really huge signs like they have on commercial properties, on residential properties.
Right, right. Well, maybe we do go with the six feet, and then just see what happens, like, who, who comes to us and, you know, maybe we just try that. I guess I'd be in favor of that.
Okay, you want to make that in a motion?
Sure, whatever we just said, yeah, I guess, change it to, from sixteen to six.
All right. Motion by Olson.
Second.
Second by Kealan, that we change our one A, one B to, instead of not to exceed sixteen square feet, that it, not to exceed six square feet. Any further discussion on that item? Go ahead.
So that brings me to the rider thing. So if there is a two-by-three sign on it, and then they put a rider up on top of it, that, you know, that would make it larger, would that be considered perhaps the second sign? Could they both, could the two signs share one frame?
I would say that would be considered one sign. And you said it's, what, three by two?
Yeah.
The square footage would count on that one sign. So if it's more than that, it'd be however many, it'd be additional for the rider.
Well, I think what Dimitri is saying, though, is, is that if that's the only sign in the yard, can that be, could that be two signs together?
Be mounted on one frame?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know. I mean, I, I think people could, people could probably figure out a way to make a larger sign than by doing that, too. So if you're concerned about the rider, then maybe you, maybe we should be asking, instead of two-by-three, do we do a three-by-three? To, to accommodate that? Do you think that's a good idea? I'm just putting that up.
I think you should just allow them to share a frame. Because if, if you're going to have a, if a real estate agent's going to put a sign in someone's yard, they're not going to want.
Dimitri, your mic, please.
If a real estate agent is going to put a sign in, in someone's yard, they're not going to want that client to put any other sign in the yard, because it would detract from their objective of trying to sell their home. And potentially, if it's political in nature, might alienate, you know, potential buyers. So, so I don't think that there's a, a problem with it, just sharing one sign. I think that would meet the needs of most people if they're selling their home.
So you're, you're suggesting that if it's two signs on one post, as long as you can tell that they're two separate signs, but they're on one post, that should be okay?
Right, but then you used up your two.
And now you want to put out a go Comets sign in addition, and they can't do that? Or go Badgers, or go anything?
Even with this situation, you can't have a go Badgers, a go Packers, and a go Comets.
That's correct.
There are limitations to, and people have to live with that to some extent.
Yeah, go ahead, Gene.
What about the special events that we have in the community where they have the banner signs that are made up? Are those, do they fall within or outside of this restriction?
Okay, so the banner signs that are, that are at specific areas within the community are a separate ordinance. I mean, I, we haven't looked at this in quite a while, while, but like out by Burger King, there's a place where you put a sign, or on Harrison Street, there's a place that also has.
Oak Street.
Yeah, where else?
Oak Street.
Oak Street, yeah. So, and those are, those are handled by a whole separate ordinance that we have here. It might be within this seventeen, but we're not talking about those. Council gave permission for those twenty years ago or so. So, and I, and we're not talking about changing those.
Thank you.
And those are temporary, too. They, they only set up for a short period of time. I mean, understand that if you agree to this, if somebody wants to keep up a Viking sign in their front yard, they can keep it up there year-round now. So that's the one thing you have here.
Or Brewers, right.
Right, well, of course, but why wouldn't you put a Brewers? Yeah, okay.
Mayor, may I just make a suggestion?
Yes, sir.
This is a first reading, and without a suspension of the rules, I just wonder if a vote on a motion to amend would be a vote on the ordinance? I'm wondering if perhaps maybe, if there's more discussion to be had, that we take the voting up at the second reading.
So the only reason that I did it this way, and I, and I'm okay with that, and they, they maybe will rescind it if you make that suggestion, the only reason I was thinking of it is because this was a recommendation by City Planning Commission to council. So should it go back to City Planning Commission?
I, I'm not suggesting that. I, I guess I'm just suggesting that the, a, a vote on the ordinance either happened at the second reading or by suspension of the rules.
Okay, so per the recommendation from City Attorney Hart, he would prefer that we do this motion on the second, at the second reading? Eric, are you okay with rescinding?
Yeah, I'll, I'll rescind.
I will withdraw my second.
Thank you, all right, thank you. All right, any other discussion on the signs? Again, first reading, we'll have a vote at our next meeting on this. Listen out in the public if you hear anything on this, and let us know about it. Go ahead, Colin.
Is there, this is procedural, and because I'm not a, you know, long-term councilman, or I really don't know. Is there a way to remove this section from our, our consideration, so that we can get the rest of it finished, so that our Main Street Marketplace can get on with their sign? I'd hate to delay them over the ground sign.
There, well, there really isn't, but Tom, do you want to address that? I mean, I, I don't think you can just approve part of.
No, I, if it's brought as a whole, it would be voted on as a whole.
Okay, so there, there isn't a way to remove part?
There, there probably would have been ahead of time.
But not today. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
So this, because it's all in the same ordinance, in the same section, there isn't, if it was two separate, there could be. Not, not in this case.
Thank you.
Good question.
So, Mayor Smith?
Yes, ma'am.
So I have one question, I'm just wondering, when it comes back in two weeks to us, it will look like it is, and we will amend it then? I'm just clarifying, we will amend it then, and do we want to stay with six, or are we going to change it to nine? We talked about three by three, we kind of left some of those ideas hanging, so I don't want to have to have another discussion next time, because we really would like to pass it next time. So what is it going to read?
That's a great question. That's a great question and there's, we'll find out at the next meeting.
So we could have another discussion?
It could be six, it could be nine. And there's nothing wrong with another discussion once you start talking to the public about this.
Okay.
Quite honestly, I guess. I mean, I get your point and that's why I wanted to make the motion tonight and get it cleared, but.
Okay.
But we could get to the second reading and we might change some things anyways after we talk to, to Joe Public.
Okay.
So. If it's a big enough change, we've done this in the past where we've just went back for another first reading and then just continued it.
Could waive the second reading.
Yeah. Yeah, Dimitri.
Um, I'd also like to toss something else out there for a change in that, um, number one A, I think the sign shall not be, shall not exceed six feet in height. The reason for that is a lot of, of the traditional colonial post, uh, real estate, uh, frames are seventy-two inches tall. Six feet.
Just, Mayor, if you don't mind just me sharing my thoughts and what I'm thinking will happen, and this might help answer Mary's question. Um, we come back to the next council meeting. Right now with the direction and the general conversation that I've heard, uh, to, to Dimitri's point, the amendment to the six feet in height, and with the rider conversation, I would, right now I would plan to come back with a nine square feet, um, at the next one. And that's something we've done in the past, had general conversation in the first reading, and then come back with some slight changes. So just so everyone knows, that's my take. Unless something changes between now and then as well.
Okay, Jared, go ahead.
And just a quick clarification question and maybe a suggestion. So was this mainly brought about to take care of like the go Comets, Packers, Vikings, little H-frame signs? Is that what the main purpose of this was for?
Uh, the main purpose of this conversation, um, centered around the fact that we have a lot of these types of signs in the community.
Those H-frame signs?
H-frame or like the, you know, like the corrugated, um, go we'll pack a comments on the little wire frame.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and the fact that we allowed zero of those signs meant that to follow our ordinance, we would have to really send notices out to everyone that has a go a pack of comments or peace, love, you know, and that conversation happened at planning commission and says, is that really what we want to do? Is that what we're trying to accomplish? That was the premise.
So in that light of thinking, would, would it be beneficial to cater this specific code change to those H-frame? Go comment, go Packers, go Vikings, go Seahawks signs? And then if we, um, put the real estate signs, which I know you were discussing as signs that do not require a permit, but something that, they may not require a permit, but we still have standards. So, you know, in a residential district, you know, the, those types of signs are, or just make them, I guess, not, not a permitted sign since they are only up temporary? I guess. Thinking out loud if. No, I know I wasn't a part of this discussion, so I guess if that contradicts anything you guys are saying, I mean, feel free to override, I guess.
I don't know if it contradicts it or not because I'm totally.
I, so just one comment off that, Jared, or a couple of comments. Number one, I think this was written in sign not requiring a permit. So that would mean that none of these would need to be permitted, which is really good for staff because all of a sudden if we're permitting four hundred residential signs, that doesn't make sense for our workload. So I think that answers one question. Number two, uh, there was some brief internal discussion about that, and I think if we're gonna allow one sign or two signs or whatever it may be, not pigeonholing it to the type of sign because A, we're getting back to content then, and B, um, we're always gonna miss something, you know, if we allow this, then, you know, so it's just if we're okay with two, we're okay with two and we're not judging based off content.
Well, I think it's important, what Eric said, although we don't like to change our ordinances very often, I mean, this is a pretty big change, so we'll find out in a hurry if this is something that, that we need to adjust once it's approved. So I, you know, I, it's a good starting point. And as I've said a hundred times through this whole process, you have two signs in your yard and you have to mow your lawn, you're gonna get sick and tired of those two signs in your yards. They probably won't sit there real long. All right, first reading. Anything else? All right, let's go to, uh, uh, closure of Main Street for the October twenty-ninth Main Street Celebration Event. And Aaron, you're on this also.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Smith. This is on page seventy-eight, um, of your packet. I have a memo talking about the Main Street Celebration on October twenty-ninth. Um, staff has been working together specifically, the planning committee, it's been myself, uh, Sue, uh, from the library, Justin from Public Works, um, and Andrew and Cassandra have been very heavily involved. Cassandra put together a really nice detailed packet that you can see attached to my memo. So the idea is, is, you know, this is a, a project that happens every once in seventy-five to a hundred years. It's something that's been in the planning for over a decade, past councils, past staff, current staff. Um, and it's had an in, big impact on the community, um, during it, and will have, um, a big impact in a positive way afterwards. And we want to celebrate that, um, with some official ribbon cutting ceremonies, as you can see at three forty-five. Uh, family, kids and Halloween activities, which is really what the parking rec has done for years. They're wrapping it up and including it in this event. Um, touch truck, uh, entertainment, and then also, uh, you'll see later the request for some of the businesses, if Main Street is in fact closed, to expand their premise and have maybe some small entertainment, um, and expand their premise of their business onto Main Street during that time. So in talking with Justin, um, and the Public Works Department, uh, we would be looking to close all of Main Street from, not all of Main Street, from Badger Street, the Badger Street, Main Street intersection, to the Water Street, Main Street intersection, Water, Granite, Cooper, that area. It's important to note that both of those intersections would be open throughout that time. So it would be just to the south of Granite Street and Main Street, and then just to the north of Badger Street and Main Street. Um, again, that would be from three P M. to eight P M. that evening. Uh, the other thing that's important to note, and this is in talking with Justin and Roger, um, we would be closing parking, uh, to make sure that we weren't, it'd be impossible to get cars out of there if we didn't close parking on Main Street, starting at, Justin, what was your recommendations? Seven A M.?
Yeah, yep, seven, seven thirty, first thing in the morning.
Uh, you can see it, thank you, Justin. You can see in your packet, uh, Cassandra did make a diagram of kind of where the events would be laid out. There's rain contingencies and all of that. Uh, so you can see the street that will be closed will be used. It'll be a great opportunity for kids, family, all of them to actually get out, walk the street itself, um, and kind of see that project. And it's also a great opportunity for staff to be out there who's, we're gonna be involved. Hopefully, as many of you guys that can make it as possible, um, we can be involved with the community. It'll be a touch point after the end of a, a great project. So that's my request, and if you have any questions, uh, I'd be happy to answer them. Yeah.
In the event our streetlights don't arrive, is there a contingency plan to light the street? Has been discussed or thought about?
That's a great question. Um, Justin, before I answer that, we don't have a detailed plan right now to bring in like separate lighting, I'll say that. Justin, what's our update? I know it was, actually, I think today was the ship date. Did you get another update on the streetlights?
Yeah, we did. So the ship date changed to October fifteenth. Um, that's the actual, getting them on a truck, getting them on the road, heading towards Opaaca. They're coming from the East Coast, so assuming that date holds, um, I would assume a week of shipping and hopefully the install the fa- the final week of October. Um, there is still a chance that that does not happen. Um, I mean, there's no backup plan for lighting at this point. Uh, there is illumination from the adjacent businesses. Number of their signs and buildings do put off light, so.
Most of the, the organized activities, except for the business, the business activities where expanding their premise, uh, are going to end at six. So you're aware of that. Uh, point well taken. Well, I think we'll have to have conversation.
Darker every day earlier, so I, I just was concerned with children and whatnot, you know? It's pretty dark even though buildings are illuminated. I've driven down there and it's gonna be a problem.
I think, uh, with that update.
Will it be spooky?
Yeah.
It will, but yeah.
Well, the trick or treating is supposed to be over at six o'clock, right, Aaron?
That's correct, Justin.
I know the sun sets now at six thirty-ish or even before, and by then it'll be probably well before six, so. Just a comment that think, if you guys want to think about it ahead of time, you know, three, four weeks, if something happens. Which in this world we live in, the shipping is pretty iffy right now, so.
Scott, a very good point. We will keep in communication on that. Um, I think there's a couple of things in my head that could be options if they didn't show up, and we will keep you guys updated and be prepared for those scenarios.
We need a motion to approve the closing of Main Street after it reopens.
Move to approve.
Motion by Martin, second by Fair, that we approve the closing of Main Street on Water Street to Badger Street from, uh, actually, yeah, three P M. to eight P M. There'll be no parking starting at, uh, seven A M. on that day on Main Street. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, say no? Motion carried. Okay, to go along with this, uh, we have, uh, some requests from three businesses to extend their premise, uh, which basically means their, their liquor license, uh, for the, for this festivity, and those three are the Pub, L L C Simpsons Restaurant and Little Fat Gretchen's L L C. Aaron, you got anything more you want to add to that?
No, uh, I think that pretty much sums it up. Um, there is a description of where that is in your packet. Uh, the pub has one starting on page ninety-one, uh, and you can see the maps as I'm scrolling through them on the screen right now. Simpsons and, uh, Little Fat Gretchen's.
Okay. Anybody like to make a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Chestnut, second by Kealan, that we approve, uh, the expanding of the premise descriptions for liquor license for celebration on Main, uh, for these three businesses, the Pub L L C Simpsons Restaurant and Little Fat Gretchen's L L C. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Um, if other businesses come forth, are we gonna have enough time if they, to get them approved on our meeting on the nineteenth?
Yeah, if, Paul, great question. Yes, we could do that if.
Okay, because I could see other businesses wanting to do this. Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, say no? Motion carried. Josh, you're up here. Enter into a tower lease agreement between Opaaca Online and Opaaca County. Paul, they did ask all businesses.
No.
Who are interested. They didn't just.
Hi, um, as you've seen on some of my updates and some of the things I've brought to council regarding Opaaca Online, we're in a process with Opaaca County and the Opaaca County Economic Development Corporation on the project in which they're erecting towers that we're gonna lease and assist in expanding high-speed internet in parts of rural Opaaca County. Um, kind of this process kind of started in, uh, the second half of twenty nineteen, and that was supported by, say, council with a approved resolution, and we're kind of nearing the point, um, the C D B G funding's been approved. The county has start work on preparing eleven tower sites, and the towers are gonna be built, um, I'm told by the end of November. We'll see if it moves that quick. And one of the last kind of things in the way to officially move forward with Opaaca Online is entering into a tower lease with Opaaca County to utilize these towers to provide internet service. Um, so this lease covers eleven towers that will be put up on different pieces of government property. It's a mix of county land, town land, some former landfill sites that are under, uh, government control. So the towers and the sites are the responsibility either of the county or the landowner, and we're just leasing space on those towers. Um, the lease is structured in such a way that it's for two years, and then after that two-year period, we can terminate at any time with sixty days notice, um, should we find it's not working out. And we've got it structured in such a way that the pricing and the lease is kind of on a per-tower basis. So maybe we get through the first two years. Um, the, the two years, if you recall from the win come, uh, that I brought to the other meeting, is kind of look-back period with the C D B G. That's the really important part. Once the two years is done, once the project's officially closed, that, that cleans up a lot of things. Um, so it's kind of structured in such a way, maybe we get past that two years, and we find a couple of the towers aren't working for us or they're underperforming, or maybe another provider wants in on it. It, it does give a chance long-term to, you know, maybe kick some towers off or choose which ones we want to continue operating on. Because the, the goal of the project, you know, we're two different government entities working together, the city and the county. You know, the goal on the county's end wasn't to profit off of this. Their goal is just to bring in enough money to cover maybe any incidental costs that come up at the tower sites, um, or anything in the future and kind of, uh, do it that way. So it's a very favorable lease amount for the first two years. And if you take a look at the lease agreement, there's two different, uh, kind of two different fee structures depending on the, the tower. Some of the sites already have electric service installed, such as at some of the town halls. Um, and then some of the sites do not have electric. So the sites that already have electricity were paying slightly more per tower with some of that money being passed on to whoever owns that land and pays the electricity to recoup their costs. And the sites that don't have electricity, those tower, uh, costs are slightly lower. And then as long as we're the sole tenant, that electric bill gets passed on to us. Um, so if you look at the second page of the lease agreement that splits out the cost, and then on the second page of my memo, I just kind of totaled out per month what it looks like. Um, so for year one annually, it's gonna be somewhere in the neighborhood of forty-four hundred dollars. And that's kind of an estimate on what the electric costs would be on the sites where we'd be responsible for electric. And year two of the lease, um, about fifty-one hundred dollars for the year. Um, I've plugged these numbers into the budget worksheet for the twenty-twenty-two budget, and everything works out really nice. And I know you'll see the budgets at a future meeting, um, so there's no issues with us covering these costs. And kind of sum it up for year one of this budget, as long as we add eight customers across the whole project area, we're gonna recoup the cost of the lease, and I hope we add a lot more than eight customers. But, um, I guess that's just kind of another way to, to look at it. Um, so to kind of sum it up, that's the highlights of the lease agreement. It is based off the same lease agreement we entered with the county to be on the emergency communications tower outside of Marion. So it's very similar at a staff level. We just edited it and, um, you know, put in the specifics for this project. Um, so, you know, with all the legalese and everything else in here, it's pretty much identical to the other agreement we're in with the county for tower space. So any questions?
Scott.
For the sites that do not have electricity, who's bearing the burden of bringing the electricity to that tower?
That's all built into the cost of getting the sites constructed, so we're not paying any of that. That's part of the grant to the, the county funding. They're getting the sites all prepared. They're getting everything ready to go. Once the towers are built and set, we get on there, we put our equipment up, and then we start paying the monthly lease.
Great, thanks.
Any else? So Josh is asking that we enter into a two-year agreement with Opaaca County at, uh, estimated cost of four thousand four hundred and forty dollars a year in year one and five thousand one hundred dollars a year for the second year.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Martin, second by Peterson, that we approve this. Any discussion? All right, uh, this is a contract, so Sandy will call the roll.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Mary Fair?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Scott Pukatsky?
Aye.
Alan Kealan?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
And Colin Dykstra?
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
Thanks.
Thanks, Josh. Next up, we have a primary sludge pump purchase at the wastewater treatment plant. Get fired up, everybody. Justin, you're on.
Thank you, Mayor. Memo starts on page one oh eight, goes through one twelve. The picture of the pump we're pumps we're looking to replace are on one-ten. Top right picture, that brown thing, that's a primary pump. Our primary tanks are basically large settling tanks at the near front end of the plant. First major part of treatment, where a lot of solids basically collect at the bottom of this tank. These pumps take those solids, remove them from the stream, and put them in our digester, which later can be converted to gas, and then what is not converted to gas is then land-applied by trucking it away. We had this replacement on our twenty-twenty-two schedule, but with our digester project cancelling that or pushing that back here, we flipped this one in. We had budgeted eighty thousand dollars, replaced these pumps along with some other items, mechanical piping, electrical, probably a little concrete work. That's all in that budget, but this is just for the purchase of a couple pumps. So when we looked into this project, we looked at a number of different styles of pumps. We settled on an air diaphragm pump, which we have a few already at the plant. Again, a picture of one similar is shown on that page one-ten at the bottom there. The reason we settled on this is basically the way that it moves liquid. It's very efficient. It's going to take from the bottom of our primaries mostly the solids and less water. The pumps we currently have run basically full speed, full go, and pulls a lot of water with it to our digester, and the reason that's important, everything that goes to the digester, we have to heat with basically boilers, natural gas. If we can reduce that total amount sent over there, obviously, we use less gas. We're going to save money with gas usage and then also save money from less volume of liquid being trucked away. So with the papers, the documents that are out there, they show a very favorable payback. We're kind of estimating a four-year payback on these pumps, which we think is actually conservative to what we saw with the papers that are out there. So we sized them. We put out a request for proposals on what we needed based on the style of pump. We received two quotes. We're not very concerned with only getting two because it's a pretty specialized pump. There's not a whole lot of manufacturers out there. You can see the two that we got are listed on the memo, and then the actual proposals submitted are scanned in and thrown in at the end of, with attachments. So moving forward, I'm looking for approval from council to purchase these two air diaphragm pumps with the funding through the sewer revenue bonds.
Okay. Any questions?
Yes, sir.
Are there going to be any focus on energy grant money either applied for or received due to the lower electrical usage?
We did not consider that. We're not really looking at, we're not looking at electrical energy costs. We're looking at gas energy costs or gas usage, so. But it's something we will, we can definitely consider and talk with our focus rep on that.
Thank you.
Yeah, anybody else? Anybody I'd like to make a motion to approve this?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Martin, second by Keeland, that we approve of purchasing an air diaphragm pump from Marshall Bond Pumps Incorporated in an amount not to exceed forty-one thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars with funding from the twenty-twenty-one sewer revenue bond. Any discussion? Sandy will call the roll.
Colin Dykstra.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Demetri Martin.
Aye.
Mary Fair.
Aye.
And Eric Olson.
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks, Justin. Next up, we have a ordinance sixteen dash twenty-twenty-one. This is an ordinance amending section one point zero seven of the municipal code as it has to do with aldermatic districts. This is also the first reading of this ordinance. Sandy?
So you're probably getting tired of me talking about redistricting because I've had it on my last two monthly reports, but we are coming to an end finally. I prepared ordinance sixteen dash twenty-one, and you, if you've looked at it, you'll see that it includes all of the word boundaries, including a map to be documented with it. And what I would do tonight is just have to do the first reading of this ordinance, but since it's rather lengthy, does anybody have any questions? Okay, thank you.
All right, that's the first reading. Okay, next up, license report number fifteen fifty-three, which is on page, the last page, one-twenty-one of your packet. We need a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, Chestnut, second by Fair, that we approve license report fifteen fifty-three. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Against say no. Motion carried. All right, communications recommendations of the mayor, the only thing I remember that we have a committee of the whole meeting talking about personnel coming up right after this meeting. So otherwise, anybody else have anything for the good of the meeting? All right, we're looking for a motion to adjourn.
Some move.
Second.
Motion by Hagan, second by Keeland, that we adjourn our regular council meeting until Tuesday, October nineteenth, twenty-twenty-one, subject to call. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against say no. Motion carried. We're adjourned at seven twenty P M. Do we need a break here, or do you want to just? It's up to you. All right, committee of the whole meeting, there's a baseball game tonight, sorry. Committee of the whole meeting, we have an agenda that you received or that was online for you to take a look at. It's really just, it has to do with personnel. So I'll call this meeting to order, and you have the one item on the agenda, really. We need a motion to approve the agenda.
Some moved.
Second.
Motion by Keeland, second by Chestnut, that we approve the agenda. Discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against say no. Motion carried. Aaron, Kathy.
Mayor, if you, if it's all right with you, we're going to just go through with each memo that talks about individual kind of changes from this year's budget to last, when compared to last year's. And then Kathy, if you want to talk about the broader picture at the end. So mine, I believe, is the fir, or the first memo is mine. It's on page two of the packet. This one talks about the shared grant writer position. Want to bring forward the fact that, if you guys all remember, this was a position that was paid for from September in two thousand twenty to September of, in two thousand twenty-one by Mr. and Mrs. Tim and Joy Neville, they donated fifty thousand dollars to the position. We did budget for the last few months of this year, but in two thousand and twenty-two, as we prepare, that will be an additional cost. We, the three partners, us, the school district, and the chamber, will be splitting a third, a third, a third in covering that, the cost for that position. And that does amount to sixteen thousand five hundred dollars in expenses. I'm proposing that that will come out of the city administration department budget under professional services. This is a position that touches all of our departments. Just to speak on the position really quickly, we talked about that, we had no idea what to expect. This is not a position that really exists in other areas, and it certainly doesn't exist from a three-pronged approach like we've taken with Chamber and the school district. We set that successful mark before we made the hire at about a hundred thousand dollars. We thought a hundred thousand dollars in revenue and grants would be something that we viewed as a success in the three parties. We obviously have surpassed that by a lot. Greg is not only a huge value, and that position is not only a huge value from the revenue standpoint, but he actually has been contributing to development review team meetings. He was in the department head meeting today. He really is a great tool for the city on so many different levels. Graphic design, he helped facilitate the arts, the art summit. He's really become engaged with the community and our organization. And I think that, to me, it's a no-brainer to, well, it is also important to note that when we did this, we did commit to year two. And this is year two in planning for it, but to me, it's no-brainer to continue to fund this position. This is how it will be reflected. So any questions?
All right, so hearing no objections to it, this obviously will be in the twenty-twenty-two budget.
I got one here quick, Aaron. Is that a, I forget what the compensation was this year. There was a percentage fee involved, what he got and all that. Is this going to, hopefully, this is, is this an increase? Or can you speak to that, or how is this?
That's a fantastic question, Scott. So, yeah, your memory is very good. The original, when we originally talked about paying this position, it was also something that we weren't sure on how to do appropriately. We tied an incentive for how many grant dollars they got, and then he would have gotten a percentage of that. He, and this speaks to kind of his character and ethics as well, came to us after it was clear that he was getting a lot of grant dollars. And he said, hey, I want you guys to know that I have been reading on the grant, the national grant associations. I've been involved in that, and from an ethics standpoint, they actually suggest never tying incentive to grant dollars received. So at that time, we talked about, okay, thank you for bringing that forward. There was a little lift in his pay at that time, and we also talked about what is going to make this position successful. You can't really be a grant writer and sit at a computer for forty hours and just pound out grants. It's just not something that any human probably is built to do. He also researches a lot of grants. So we talked about a more of a flexible work schedule, and he agreed to it, and that's the premise we're operating on. It's worked very well. Thanks.
So if we can pay someone fifty thousand and get two million dollars worth of grant money, why don't we hire two or three of these people?
Yeah, that's a fair question. I will say that one thing that we do have to talk about, and actually Greg and Kathy will be meeting in the next couple of weeks. It has been an overwhelming success. There are some small challenges, and the small challenges have to do with preparing for the administrative piece once, and the administrative requirements once you receive this money. So depending on the grant, there is a lot of follow-up for staff, and it's not necessarily follow-up that Greg, the grant writer, can do all of. So it might fall on our finance department, it might fall on myself, it might fall on community economic development. So to be honest, as we move through the next year or two of this relationship, I'll call it, we will be working through how to do that while making sure we're not giving up other things that we're accustomed to doing in those departments. Does that make sense?
Yeah, as good as he is at the grant writing part, the part that I really enthused about is how he's been able to work into the other areas like our, especially our development review team. He's been a huge asset there to it. That really has nothing to do with grant writing. It just has to do with his ability to help us in that area. Yeah. Anybody else? Colin, go ahead.
Is he technically a employee of just the city? And the reason I'm asking this is there's, as you guys break this down, there's costs. I think it was forty-eight-five plus fifteen hundred divided by three, and then they would, they would pay, the other two organizations would pay a certain amount of that. But there's other costs incurred by whoever's employing him, taxes, FICA tax. But maybe I'm wrong. This is, my background is with, maybe with a public official, they don't pay those taxes. But there's more costs to an employee than just his salary. And so how is, if it's the city that's his employer, how are we recouping those costs from the other two who are benefiting?
Well, this is a good question. I'll let Aaron respond to you, but it's a good question because when we did this, this was all answered, but obviously, you're new to that. So it's good to have that because we all need that refresher.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Yeah. So thanks, Mayor, and thanks, Colin. So this is actually technically a chamber position, and we matched the chambers benefit schedule, which is not the city's or the school district's. So the things that are bullet pointed there are really, that's the total sum of the benefits. And then we reimburse the chamber for the third amount. And that was really built for a couple of reasons. Number one is because the first year we had that fifty thousand dollars to work with, and that's where we're at, so.
Okay, so he's an employee of the chamber, and we reimburse them. The city reimburses them.
Right.
Anybody else? All right, so we're going, what are we doing? We're moving on to Kathy?
No, Justin, I think Justin's up.
Says Justin.
Sure, I'm ready.
Personnel, Public Works.
Yep, yep. So my memo is shown there. The first item on there, personnel, that deals with our custodial staff. We, when we're have, we're full strength, we have five custodians on staff and serve the various buildings within this city here. As of late, we've switched over to utilizing staffing first, or service-first staffing, excuse me, because we were having quite a bit of turnover with a lot of those employees. So we worked through them. They, you know, they would bring on the employees, they would give them to us, and it was a much easier, cleaner process to deal with all the turnover. We've also tried a few other things, raised the part-time wages over the last few years. But with that service-first staffing, we've had one custodian, Melinda Block, who's been with us for just a touch over three years, and she does an excellent job. She focuses mostly City Hall Library. And with the service-first staffing, we pay them sixteen dollars an hour to cover her wage, and then they also get a little bit off the top. What we want to do is bring her on as an actual City of Wapaka employee, hire her and put her on our, as a part-time employee, permanent part-time employee, looking to start her off at twelve fifteen an hour. That would put her kind of in the middle of the rest of the staff that we have on board, underneath the two that have more experience than her and just above one that has a little less. Doing that, we will save around three thousand dollars an hour because instead of paying sixteen bucks an hour, we're at roughly twelve. So that's the first one. The next two, in our street department, Zach Thorne and Brogan Kanzoria were hired on the street department in twenty eighteen as laborers. They have made incredible strides with their work. They're go-getters. They've picked up on a lot of things. They basically operate our most complex piece of equipment, which is our backer truck. Those two guys, the older, the older gentleman in the group, basically let them handle it. They bust their butt picking up leaves. They jump in plow trucks during the snow events. We feel like they've earned it both with their work ethic and then also picking up the knowledge and skills of our most complex pieces of equipment. So we'd like to promote them from operator to skilled operator. And that, what that means is basically just what I said, they, they, they're the first ones in the bigger trucks, the more complex pieces of equipment. You need to have a lot of responsibility and respect when you're using. You need to have a lot of responsibility and respect when you're using these things, because they're very pricey. A half million dollar piece of equipment is nothing to mess around with, you need to be able to work very efficiently. They were hired within our new pay scale. That was adopted back in twenty seventeen, so the traditional way is you'd have a six-month probational period at ninety percent, and then you'd be full, or then brought on underneath your full rate. They're still within the middle scale, so we're still seeing savings, even though we are promoting them. But that was the whole point of the pay scale, was to reward guys with performance, and then also a little bit with longevity. The future plan, starting this winter, is to start having these guys take on a bigger role in the snow removal, which is extremely important, especially when we have to get roads cleared before seven, eight o'clock in the morning. We're gonna have these guys get in the bigger trucks, the bigger equipment, and then start phasing out our mechanic, Jake Waller, and then even further in the future, Roger, our street superintendent out of it. The reason for that is during the snow events, our mechanic is usually needed in the garage fixing things, because things, things break. The street superintendent can be just as valuable coordinating than he is just actually moving snow. So, that's the future plan, so there's a transitional plan here, as we expect a couple in the staff to kind of move on to retirement, we'd have that expertise on board, and then also the plan to be more efficient with some of our higher value operations and services.
Okay, anybody have any questions? All right. Remind me, Justin, how that works, are these salaries a hundred percent paid by the, by the general fund, or is some of this part of the sewer and water?
These two are through the general fund, yes.
Good. All right. Thanks.
Yep.
Anybody else? All right. Now, we're, now are we at Kathy?
We're back to me.
No, we're back to Aaron.
Colin, you guys.
We're all over the place.
Where am I, why am I missing this? All right, go ahead.
All right. So, on page twelve of the packet, you'll see another memo from me, and this is, it's talking about an E D A planning and technical assistance grant. And the reason we're talking about this is because it directly relates to a personnel position in the community and economic development department. So, we have not yet accepted this planning grant, and when we got more information, we had it in time to add it to this agenda for the community of the whole, but not really to add as an agenda item for the council packet. So, you will be seeing that at the October nineteenth council meeting. Part of this, again, going back to the grant writer, Greg did receive, or we received word that we are, have been awarded a hundred thousand dollar E D A planning grant, and this is really for the creation of an economic development resiliency plan. And it also can pay for person, part of it can go towards personnel. So, right now, part of this grant, it does require a thirty thousand dollar cash match, which we'll talk about in a second. But if we decide on giving that thirty thousand dollar cash match, we will receive a hundred thousand, seven hundred dollars. And seventy-two thousand of those dollars would go towards the services for a plan creation, and then the staff position would be paid the additional, this is, I should have put this differently, but really, if you're looking on the screen right now, the twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred would go towards the staff position. That current staff position is Andrew Dane. Andrew, as we talked about when we brought on the economic development director, Jared, we felt like at that time it was important to continue Andrew and his role to usher in the downtown incentive grants, the River North, so it would make his transition smooth and give him a chance to be successful. We're wanting to continue to do that, and then he'll have a hand in this economic development resiliency plan. So, to sum it up, we, in two thousand and twenty-two, we have thirty thousand dollars of wages, part-time wages, budgeted for Andrew Dane. Twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred would be covered by this grant. And that is, is the proposal, and that'll be reflected the budget when you see it in the first review.
Paul, go ahead.
I'll bite, what is a resiliency plan?
All right, yeah. So, an economic development resiliency plan is meant to address some things that we've seen, so in our, let's, for example, our credit ratings, we get dinged on our credit ratings when we go to borrow for bonds and such, on the fact that we are overly reliant on manufacturing, thirty, thirty-plus percent of our jobs are manufacturing, if something were to happen to that industry, the city would be in a difficult position. I'm sorry, Mary. And then also tourism is another huge reliance in this area in general. So, this resiliency plan would talk about creating things like business incubators, you know, how can we encourage different types of sectors to invest in the city of Opaaca and give ourselves more diversity? It also directly speaks to a plan that would help address, we went through a pandemic, how did the pandemic really impact our small businesses, large businesses? What were the short terms and what were the long-term impacts, and how do we prepare ourselves to better, to be better equipped for something like this or that in the future? So, those are the types of things that we're looking to address in this plan. We talk about plans all the time. Sometimes it does feel like we do a lot of planning, let's take action, I would say that there's been quite a bit of action over the last year and a half. This also, you know, this is an opportunity to get a professional plan done at the expense of the E D A and not the city of Opaaca.
Thank you.
Yeah, in the long run, too, this will give us the opportunity to apply for more grants, so it's kind of a win-win type thing. All right, any questions on that? All right, I'm not even gonna say, who's next? Somebody raise your hand, you're next. All right.
It's now my turn. My position that I am looking at is the utility clerk's position. With the retirement of the deputy clerk and bringing Jerry Allen into, or deputy treasurer, to bring in Jerry Allen as the deputy treasurer, we've moved some items around. We do now just have a part-time utility billing clerk, Shelley Morsefeld, and she was originally in the online department doing customer service, and she was a really good fit to give her a couple more extra hours to be able to do the utility billing and not have that reliance on one position to do payroll and the utility billing, when some of those due dates all combine on the same week, same day, to be able to get everything out. She is responsible for billing our twenty-seven hundred accounts and collection. So, we, with the addition of the refuse and recycling billing to the monthly utility bill, we are looking to ask that this become a full-time position. This would be a net neutral effect on the budget, it is spread between the general fund, the water utility, the sewer utility, online, and it would also encompass the ten percent overhead that we would be charging on the refuse side, so we're looking at creating that position, and then we've had Sherri Knight as a part-time administrative assistant doing the front counter. We would, we've noticed that there hasn't been as much for her to do, so we would lay her off at the end of the year and get back to just the three full-time positions that we had in two thousand fourteen when I started. So, we found that Sherri's done a really great job when we needed her for the last five years. She helped when we were short-staffed and helped the clerk's office out with elections, so we really appreciated her help, but we're moving on with what we need with the utility billing clerk. So, the, like I said, the net effect on the general fund is zero.
Good. Any questions there? All right, you have something else?
I have some more stuff.
Yep.
So, going through what we are getting for the levy limit increase, I've shared with the mayor and Aaron that we just got notice from the Department of Transportation that our transporta, general transportation aids are up. We are seeing increase in building permit activity, hopefully getting everything else back to normal with as far as participation in fee collection. We are, we are looking with, based on the mayor's recommendation, to have a two percent across the board increase for general employees. This does mimics the contract that we have with the police union. And then we would add, also put aside one percent incentive pay percentage out there in contingency. We also are very favorable. I wanted to say that I'm not gonna push my luck for next, for the following year, but we have another zero percent increase in our health insurance premiums. We have either very, very healthy employees on our plan, or we are just beating the odds of everybody else, so they are, they are giving us another zero percent increase on our health insurance, staying with Wisconsin County's Association Group Health Trust. So, very, very happy that that was given to us this, this month is for planning purposes. We'll have, may have a change in the vision plan. We've received some concerns that for the premium, the coverage isn't that much, so we're marketing out the employee vision plan and have some review to do with the Wellness and Employee Insurance Committee to, this month, to see where we're gonna go with that. We have zero percent increase in the Anthem Dental premiums for the employees with no coverage and change, so we're doing really, really well. So, as far as personnel, I believe the, the two percent increase can be covered with the amount that we are going to be able to raise the general tax levy, which is one and a half percent, which is about forty-five thousand dollars.
Okay. Go ahead.
I'm just wondering, what kind of a financial impact would it have on the budget if the city set a minimum wage for city employees starting at fifteen dollars?
The biggest departments that, the biggest impact would probably be on park and recreation. You'll either have to raise your fees for programs, because a lot of those employees, correct me, Andrew, are around just above minimum. And the other department that relies on lower-paying help is the library. So, most of our other part-time employees are running about fourteen, if you look like Justin has on our custodial staff, it's about twelve dollars an hour. But to bring it to, up to fifteen, you may see some some higher costs that you would have to, to absorb.
Well, of course, but can you give me a rough idea what that might add up to?
I don't know, because the, the full, the part-time is seasonal, so I don't, I, I don't have, I can base it on, I'd have to go back like two, maybe three years, and see what that would be if I brought everybody up to fifteen dollars an hour. I mean, that's almost doubling some of the wages that we're paying, some of the, some of those summer help that we have.
Well, maybe if it was just full-time employees?
Full-time employees, we do not have anyone that is under fifteen dollars an hour.
Anybody else have any questions? All right. Yeah, thank you. Anything else for the good of this committee of the whole meeting? Oh, Aaron, you had something you wanted to say?
Oh, yes, thank you, Mayor. Kathy mentioned the two percent permanent lift for employees and then the one percent incentive, which is something we talked about last year. I just want to remind, I'm sorry, Mary, Mary, I just want to remind everyone that this was on my work plan for this year. It is something I plan to start here in the next half a month, and I plan to bring something forward to council before the end of the year.
So, neither to say he doesn't qualify for any of that one percent?
Yeah, that, exactly, that's exactly my point.
All right, anybody else? We need a motion to adjourn.
Some moved.
Motion by Kealan.
Second.
Second by Hagan, that we adjourn.